Okay. Peter?
Well, what I've just said, I was trying to say exactly what that is. What's different about what I just said?
Yeah.
So, connect, I'd say that means integrate the performing arts and wellbeing panels.
So, what we're voting on is the final line in the report?
Yeah.
Establish a more permanent forum that can support the development of the performing arts.
That's, yeah.
Okay. And we...
I don't know, I don't, I don't think it needs to be said any differently to the number seven point, but there we go. Sure, okay.
So, what do, what do, do you... Yeah, and there's no, there's no harm in having it integrated at a later date.
Okay.
Okay, so Al is proposing, Peter's seconding, and all those in favour. Any against? You, and any abstentions? Okay, thank you, Al. Right, the next item on our agenda is three-year funding agreements. And I'd like to invite Peter Wheelhouse to come and tell us about them.
Okay, for a number of years, the council has supported a number of not-for-profit organisations within the town. And the, the situation that we're in really is, is that in many cases, there is an ongoing need on the part of those not-for-profit organisations to be supported, and particularly in line with our wellbeing objectives. The significance of three-year funding for many of these organisations, or at least multi-year funding, is to assist them with the, with their own financial planning over a medium-term period. In this case, we're identifying three years as representing that medium term. It also helps us in terms of our own medium-term financial planning if we think about entering into agreements which are longer than a single year. Into any huge detail with regards to the needs of each individual organisation that are identified in this paper, all I really want to do at this stage is, is to indicate to you that we have identified what we think that the primary benefits are of continuing to support these not-for-profit organisations. To say that we have identified what we think is a, a need in each of the next three years in terms of the finance that these organisations require to be able to operate. And also to identify that there are a number of conditions that we feel should apply to each of these organisations should you choose tonight to support these organisations over the next three years. And those conditions are identified on the, the final page of the paper. And they're quite important in the sense that it's really critical that we understand what each of these organisations are going to deliver and what kind of targets they're going to meet. So, first of all, the belief is that we should sit down with each of these organisations and agree a set of targets which are capable of being measured. Secondly, that we should agree a communications plan with each individual organisation which acknowledges the support that the town council is providing, but also ensures that our brand features in their publicity in the future. And finally, but most importantly, that we should hear on an annual basis how well they're doing against those targets that have been set. And that at that point, we review that agreement and the levels of funding that we're providing to each of those organisations. So, the recommendations are set out in the paper. I think the suggestion is that, is that, in fact, we need to amend those slightly in the sense that, number one recommendation, I don't know whether you can put, put those up on the screen, is that we approach, sorry, we agreed to the approach to multi-year agreements set out in this report. What we really mean by that is that those proposed conditions that are set out in detail should apply. So, that should probably be a bit more explicit within those recommendations. The other slight amendment is that, the suggestion is that there should be delegated authority to the town clerk in consultation with a senior staff advisory group, so not just the mayor, but a wider, wider group of councillors to negotiate and agree the detail of targets for each recipient. I think that Peter McFadyen may also suggest. One, one other point?
Okay. Okay.
So, that's it. If you've got any questions, obviously I'll take them.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back to the recommendations in a minute, but yeah, thank you, Peter. This has been a long time coming. Can we just keep our questions focused, brief, maybe around the organisations or perhaps the, the proposed conditions? I've got Tim first.
Yeah, just two quick points. Have you built in organisations playing in to give warnings or have you created that year-on-year?
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to ensure within a service-level agreement that there is an opportunity for us to review our support. And the trigger for that would be the annual report. We would expect, for example, a set of accounts to be presented as part of that annual report and for us to ask questions of the organisation in, in terms of whether they're, they're managing, whether they're performing. Generally, do we feel that, that we can continue to support those organisations at that level of funding?
The other, the other thing to tell, about who identifies is that the three years within the next five years, another organisation, we've built in space, we have taken another organisation, or we've had a limit of drop until these three years are...
Well, I think that, that, that's for you to decide really.
So, yeah, I'd add that in the next year, this would be the limit, but in future years, we could change that limit. There would, there's no, yeah, absolutely. Another question on Tim's table.
My educational work, I guess there will be other organisations that might come to the town council and say, look, can you fund this? Would that be an average, it's quite a lot to Tim's point. Also, the other part I wanted to ask about was whether, do you think if the organisations come back and say, look, the demand is out of expectation before you've had this funding now, which is a lot more secure, would it be maybe better? The demand, I think, would, wouldn't there be a capacity for the agreement to increase the funding now for that, do you agree?
Any organisation can come to the council at any time really, you know, if it feels that it has a, a need that needs to be met. But I think that we're going to be constrained by budget. I mean, as, as we, as we're meeting here today, we know that, that we are going to be working within a relatively tight budget for next year. And I, I think that that will be a consideration in terms of what we can do in year one. In answer to your second question, of course, you know, if, if it comes to light that an organisation needs more support, then it will be in the gift of the council to decide this time next year as to whether we should change the arrangement with each individual organisation. So, there is ultimate flexibility, but I, but I think that that, that flexibility will come on an annual basis. It will be difficult for, for us to make changes, you know, partway through a year.
Okay, I'm going to take Simon, and then I know I've got other people coming back, so let's take Simon first.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Peter, can you explain to us the process consultation and transparency that is, has gone around the selection of these organisations, particularly for three-year funding agreement? And what the kind of foundation for selecting them has been? I think for a lot of them, it's quite evident that they fit the town council's wellbeing agenda very closely, but some of them seem to not do that. And I'm just interested in why they've been selected for these agreements rather than other organisations?
In many cases, we're, we're dealing with organisations that the town council has been supporting over a number of years, but not on a multi-year agreement basis. That, that's a starting point. However, you know, we are conscious, you know, working in our various networks around the town of who, who needs support, you know. It, it isn't just myself who, who, who has been working on this. I mean, there are other colleagues, for example, Kate Hellard, who works within the, the community sector, who has been working with a number of organisations around the town. And the, the requirement for us to step in and support them with their financial needs has become apparent through, through that networking that we've been doing. I don't know whether anyone else who's involved in, in this process would like to offer any further information. I don't know whether Paul would like to add to that.
No, I mean, that, what you said's fine. Jean, can I bring you in there?
So, just a couple of points. I think one of, one of the issues for having a, a multi-year agreement as opposed to any other agreement was generally people that were tried and true. So, we weren't, we weren't going to commit to a new organisation, even if it was within our strategy, for three years. But that's not to say that they couldn't be funded. And the other point I wanted to make in response to what you were saying is that if organisations are doing really well with, with our funding and they've got so far, it may be that they can get match funding or crowdfunding. So, there are, there are lots of other mechanisms for funding. There's, there's crowdfunding, there's, there's, there's other smaller grants, and there's this. So, we wouldn't necessarily, if they were doing well, lob them more money. We might say, well, you're doing so well, you know, maybe you need to do your own, your own fundraising and we will kind of support you as a baseline, because there's always new organisations and new things that either we want to do or the town wants to do, that, that we want to support. So, you know, that's an important point. But one of the criteria is, is that the, the organisations that generally that we're supporting for multi-year agreements is, is we know them well, they're tried and true, you know, they're, they're, A, B, they're delivering what we've agreed is our strategy. So, as you see, many of them are wellbeing. And then there's, there's, there's things, there's, for example, Harri's Hydro, where there's been a commitment in the past to an organisation that, that maybe wouldn't make it to our priorities, but is, is a commitment that we have to honour. Hope that helps.
Thanks, Jean. Mel, and then Charles.
I apologize, I meant at the beginning to declare a non-pertinence interest in two items on this report. I won't speak on this report, but one of them is, I'm a trustee at Fairfroome and I have a personal connection with the chairman of the Froome Community Education.
Thank you. Charles.
The, the funding that you're offering is going to be clearly very valuable and well-received with grateful thanks from all these organisations, nice speakers, active and in touch. But the fact remains that the majority of them, if not all, have to find even more than this funding elsewhere. So, whilst it's a very valuable contribution and a sign of support, the organisations are still fundraising like mad elsewhere and they have reports to give to those other funders, including the charity commission. So, there are other players in the game by a long way. But what you're proposing, of course, is, is very well-received and gratefully received and it will be a help, a significant help. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Charles. Right, can we just clarify the, the new version of the recommendations?
Yeah, one and two remain unchanged, and then number three is delegate authority to the town clerk in consultation with the senior staff advisory group to negotiate and agree the detail.
Okay, we all clear on that? Can we have a proposer then? Are we, are we happy to take all three recommendations at once? Anybody unhappy with that? Three separately, okay. So, one and two, can we have a proposer, please? Jean, thank you, and a second are rich, and all those in favour? Including me? And any against? And any abstentions? Okay, excellent. Unanimous. And then number three, which is to delegate authority. Okay, all those in favour? Sorry, I need a proposer then, I, who's proposing? Peter, who's, Sheila is seconding, all those in favour? Thank you very much. All those against? You, and any abstentions? That's a majority. Well done. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we are, I'm, I'm moving us on. We're getting there. Right, we're moving into the town hall. I'm going to ask Paul to give a quick update, and then we're going to move straight into Meg's presentation. Paul?
How do I get there?
Other way.
Thanks, Toby. Really, this is just the, the bi-monthly update on the Froome Town Hall project. Colin and I have been having quite detailed discussions with the architects and the builders about colours of paint and types of audiovisual equipment we're going to have in there. I think we're both really pleased the way it's progressing. It's, it's going more or less on schedule. It's, it's a, a one-week delay on the original plan, which isn't too bad, I don't think, over a year. And we should take ownership in the first half of February. There are lots of little bits and bobs that Colin and I are spending an awful lot of time making at the moment, and we want to just sort of give you the confidence that what we think we're deciding on is, is right. Mel will, Meg will cover a lot of the, the what-next questions in this, in her part. So, the last part for me is just to say, at the last meeting, you asked me to put the Palmer Street offices on the market. They are on the market. They're on the market for 375 with my canisters. It's a prime piece of real estate. If anyone's really interested, you know, we could maybe do a deal. But, but seriously, in the week that it's been on the market, I think we've had six or seven people around to visit it already, which is an indication of the interest in it. So, while I wouldn't say 375 is in the bag for us, I'm quite confident that we're going to get more than we thought a couple of years ago for it. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Paul, Meg. So, we'll take questions for Paul and Meg after we've heard Meg's presentation.
So, hello. So, my name's Meg Mosley, and I am the Marketing Communications Manager for Froome Town Council. And within that, I am the manager of the Froome Town Hall, which at the moment, I've been in post for eight weeks, and this is the main area that I'm focusing on. Been auditing marketing, I'll come back to that, but this is, this is the project. I've been working with the whole team on it, so if I can't answer your questions today, I will absolutely endeavour to come back to you, really care about the project. So, sorry if I can't answer everything. I've got Paul here, who's been working on it with me. I've got Jackie back at the office, who does finances and all the budgets, and she's really ready to help come forward with any questions around that. So, it's all there, ready. Okay. So, my team is Rebecca, who's Marketing Communications Administrator, the Froome Town Hall steward, who we have put out the job description and application, and we are shortlisted, and we will be interviewing December the 14th, the next Wednesday. And in my team also is the information staff, Tricia, Theresa, and one to be appointed. So, that's my team. So, looking at the Froome Town Hall, so going back to your, you know, the original brief that was created for the Froome Town Hall, the main principles that you wanted was it to be accessible, an information hub for the community, and to retain the integrity of the building, and that it's sustainable. So, for the information centre, as this town hall will be the hub for the community, we've got two recommendations on the report that I wrote. And one is that the information team move up to the town hall with us, and that also we create a really good backfill to support the services there that are currently at the library. So, just to talk, that's moving on to tenants. So, just to talk about the information report, there's a whole table. I took a day to work with the library with the information team and write up really what, what they provide for the public. Actually, 75% of the football is local residents and 25% tourists. So, we really want to make sure that the services that we give those people coming in the door, that we can retain that in the town hall. I've also met with the lead librarian, Kerian, who went through the table of this report there, and she's happy that if we can take those things forward and make sure we're really clear that we can also move people back to the library and make really clear the services they give, that that will work well. So, I had a good meeting with her. So... So, the timeline of sort of things happening is that, so you created the, the town hall brief that we're carrying out the refurbishment that you're aware is going to finish mid-February, and that I'm in position now so that I can deliver on those principles of it being accessible, an information hub, integrity of the building, and sustainable. So, looking at the tenants, we're expecting Fairfroome and to come with us, and why, we hear you, active in touch. We're hoping that Froome FM will take one of our spaces, and also the volunteer project will be based in our reception. We're also in conversation with lots of community organisations. So, one of the main things to work on is the tariffs. These are collection tins that were found in the attic, so there was a little bit of treasure. So, looking at really at the moment, what's happening is we're looking at, you know, creating the offer. So, making sure that we are affordable to community organisations, that the tariffs are right. I'm aware that in November last year, you had some sort of budgets and finances of what the rooms would be valued at to help with this. The building's changed a lot since then, the spaces have changed a lot, so we're looking forward now to review that and come up with the correct, offering the right tariffs. We've had professional valuations on the spaces as well to make sure that we're doing that. So, looking at the spaces, obviously, as I said, is that we're making, we want to make the right offer, the right sort of tariff prices, and sustainable and affordable. This is just to show you where the, the council chamber is at. It's going to look really foolish. It's been hit it up very high spec with really good audiovisual equipment. These meetings will be there. So, this is a very special room, and quite a unique and large space for a room. So, quite an exciting space for us to have. And also, it's the one space that could be used for a rival to, which might help generally the building be sustainable, so that lots of community organisations can use it. And then the other spaces you've got are kind of office spaces. And this is just to show you how we started to put the benching, the desking around in these office spaces, and we've got meeting rooms and hot desking. And then really just to show, it's some nice visuals, some nice things to look at. She was being retained, the original five places. So, just to, just to remind us all of just how beautiful some of it is, you know, and all these features that have been retained, the mosaics on the floor, and the stained glass windows. So, very beautiful, and all these, all the sort of integrity of the building is being retained in a, in a really wonderful way. At the same time, we're going to launch the town hall at the end of March, we're going to be in February, we're launching it in March, and also at the same time, launch a book on the town hall about its history. Paul will give you more information on that, but I'm working with him so that we can launch that. All about the history of the town hall, but it also brings out some lovely personal stories too. For example, this lovely married couple, he'd got married 50 years ago, and now they are outside the town hall again. So, it's just a really, really nice book on the history, but with personal stories too. Coming to marketing, I will be doing loads of this. So, at the moment, I've been auditing and just understanding what we all need to communicate, and I put that in the report. And I also put in the report what I propose for the next four months' work. But I just wanted to say that I'm working openly and clearly, and I've actually completely blocked in O'Connor's saying, one of the recommendations is you are going to be my town hall sponsor. So, there we go. So, for the marketing, just to remember that marketing, you can demystify. It is a story told really well with parts on, you see, Froome has that. And so, that's quite a privilege, exciting for me to do that kind of marketing with you all. And that's really the best marketing, and what you all sound like you want to do anyway, is storytelling, not storytelling. So, be acting out and, and living the values that you want to promote and communicate. So, that is the thing I'm really excited and motivated to help with. Marketing is my thing, my strength, and so I feel really excited to be in this position, very happy to be here. And I look forward to showing you all the positive messaging I can do in the community, great events, as you've mentioned, that go on here. And I hope for social media, so I can still have a bit of heart and soul. It can't be that it's just, just information, it needs to be relatable to people. Everyone's really tired online, everyone's got massive digital energy, so it needs to be relevant, and it needs to be not too much and not too heavy, because everyone just switches off very quickly now. So, it's, that's, can't really see that picture very clearly. So, that was just at the Christmas event that just happened, just to show that, you know, we're responsible for community here together, and I look forward to telling stories with parts on and communicating clearly. There we go, that's my...
Meg? Thank you very much. Okay, before we move to the recommendations, anybody got questions, comments for Meg or for Paul? Jean? Anyone got a microphone near Jean? Who's left them? Thank you.
I, I know one of, one of the things we've, we've discussed a little bit is, is whether we're going to try and market to the, some of the statutory services who, who currently use other places in Froome. So, like child and adolescent mental health services rent space in the Black Swan, the registrar uses space in the library. And, and I know, just anecdotally, that some of them aren't particularly happy with their accommodation. There would obviously be an advantage to us in the sense of we're trying to kind of communicate better with those services. Are we going to, as part of our marketing, not just market to, to voluntary organisations, but just see if some of those would be interested in sharing space or using some of our space?
I don't know. Yeah, absolutely, Jean. We're, we're talking to the registrar, not necessarily about bringing the office up, because the county is quite keen on keeping that service in the library. But the ceremonies, I think, would be, we've, we've got, have talked to them in the past, and Meg's going to be talking to them soon. Yeah. The other statutory service is quite an interesting one. They, they, some of, some of the statutory services want to be kept in chapter mallet without, to, to feed off each other, as you and I heard from, from Somerset County Council the other week. So, I think we need to just tread quite carefully. I think we, we certainly want to encourage many people and as many services in there as possible. But I think we need to be sensitive about treading on other people's toes as well.
Anyone else?
Nick? All of the ones that, that Meg has listed will be paying. Will be paid? Yeah.
Anyone else? No? Great. Let's move to the recommendations. There are four of them. So, Tim O'Connor to become the sponsor, the information centre staffed in the library to move to the town hall and agree the general direction of the backfill plan, and just noting the marketing and communication work for the next four months. So, we have, Nick?
Just on the backfill?
Yes.
I've got reservations about, I know lots of people continue to go to the libraries after a point in time. For information, particularly visitors to the town, this is a lovely place to go. I don't know if they then prefer to come up the hill up to here to find whether they would be making that effort to do so. So, I think I'm a bit worried about the gap that will happen, people going into the library, not getting the information they want because they're saying they've got to go to the top there around the corner and opposite the picture.
Yeah, I know exactly what you mean. So, when I was speaking to Kerian, it was twofold really. One, that there could be a, or within the library, so something that stays there with them. information, better use of the notice boards that are nearby, but also just think about, you know, how our information is put across on our website, the main can be quite, can be to find certain things that they need to know. So she was aware and I was in agreement that actually maybe looking at the website and the information on there, so it could be easy for anyone to be referring people to finding out the information they need, so twofold really to kind of understand maybe the footfall into the library, but that's, that's also what we came up with.
Go on, go on Charles.
I will advocate that you write in a review of how the tourist information and support is working with this removal up to the town hall. You had an extreme, we had an extremely efficient and well-run volunteer section in the Black Swan area for many years with lots of very enthusiastic, well-informed people that didn't cost you anything, apart from Karen's town. And I think that element of presence in the middle of town, now that the police post has closed and moved into the library, now you're moving the tourist information and town information up to the town hall, you're losing more and more of the walk-in visibility or walk-around visibility in the centre of town. You've obviously thought about that before you went the way you did, but I just suggest that next, in a year's time, you see how it's working, because I think you're going to lose that essential human contact in the middle of town, which has dissipated already, moving into the library in many ways, and it's getting wor... it will be worse once you move in that type of human contact, people visiting the town, if you move what you've got now into the town hall without a physical presence where you can ask people.
I think, Charles, it has, it has been thought about quite a lot and there is a plan in place to deal with as much of that as possible and I would agree with you that it's reduced already. And in fact, it was reduced significantly when Mendit, you know, tourist, whatever that section of Mendit was, took the money away from running tourist information. It's, and it's been difficult for us to keep that, that level of support, you know, even as it is, which is not a great level of support. And there are other organisations in town which will be part of the solution, including the library and presumably including the Cheese and Grain as well. So it's about building it back up in a, in a different way.
Great, but you do, you have had, but you've lost, a nil-cost group of very good volunteers and they're still out there.
Yeah, some, some time ago, I think. Okay, I'm moving us into the recommendations. Can we take all four as one? Anybody like to take anything individually? No? Great. Can I have a proposer for all four please? Colin and a seconda Rich, all those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? And that is unanimous. Thank you. Right, we're getting there. Thank you Meg. Okay, we're back to Paul for a very brief progress report on the delivery, the current year's delivery programme.
Yep. No, it's not. Should I flag it? As, as you know, we have a strategy, we have a work programme and the work programme is produced every year and it forms the basis of all the work that we do. Eight months into this year, I thought I'd just give you a quick update on how we're getting on. The headline is that we think we're doing fine actually, we're not doing brilliantly because we can always do better, but a lot of the work programme has either been completed or is making good progress. Excuse me, you'll, you'll know that the, the strategy is for four years and year one we're eight months into, so a lot of the projects that we were starting as a result of the strategy are in progress and starting and not completing. What I wanted to do is give you some wonderful pictures of pillar one, which is the progress we're making on the environment, but suffice to say that we've done some really good work in this area, we've got management plans and I think the, particularly on the conservation side, on the Dippy and on Rodden Meadow, some really brilliant progress is being made. Obviously Chris and us have invested heavily in paths over the last six months, we've taken on the Showfield and installed the adult fitness equipment. So overall, I think the pillar one, the environment, is doing really well. The one element that none of us are happy with, I think, is the town still feels not clean. We're making some progress on building a relationship with ID Verdi, which was the landscape group and Mendit District Council, but we haven't cracked that one yet. I don't know why ID Verdi is, I don't know, ID and then Verdi as a group. So overall, I think on the environment, we're doing, we're not doing too badly, but with that one blip, but not through water trying. In that area as well, of course, we've made some really good progress on implementing the sports panels, recommendations, we're working very closely with SASP and the SASP officer who is also Gary Collins, one of our councillors, and things are going really well in that area. Pillar two was the prosperity side of things, we've produced a lot of detail there for you, for the record really, so I'm not proposing to read all of that out, but perhaps the highlight is that we have now got the neighbourhood plan in place, passed the referendum and then on the 12th of December Mendit will be making it, is the term evidently, which is very, very smart, it'll be part of the local development plan. And then finally on pillar three, which is the wellbeing area and the subject of what we've talked about a lot today and what will be incorporated into next year's work programme is doing more and wider and deeper on wellbeing as we've heard already. One, one area that is, is part of this is the improving communications and Mel was, Meg was talking about that earlier, so that will be an expanding area of work for us. And the, the final thing I wanted to say on the wellbeing section was about volunteer Froome. Kate Hellard has worked really hard with Spark, not SASP but Spark this time, which is the... Kate, what does it stand for? I'll come back to you, it's fine. But we've signed the contract with him yesterday and the project is about to be launched and again underway, which I think is a really exciting project for us to be associated with. So really that was just a canter through, I did have some wonderful pictures that I'll send you because I was really proud of them. If there's any questions on progress to date, I'm sure between us, the staff and councillors, particularly the sponsors can answer those. So it was just a canter through.
If there are quick questions, we'll take them, but I'd rather move on. It's getting late. Good, okay, Paul, you're up again.
Right, okay.
Yeah, okay, so we're moving on to the next item, which is for us to take a decision about the work programme for the next financial year, 2017, 2018.
Actually, I'll do that from here because I'm not going to say very much at all. We've, we've talked with councillors an awful lot and at the two committees about the work programme for the next year. We've had good discussions on wellbeing, we've had really good discussions on taking forward our resilience work and the, the appendix three that you'll see, that looks a bit like this enormous great cover table, should be in your pack. The bits in red are the new bits that we're proposing, the bits in black are just continuing the projects that we've started this year. And that's all I would say on that.
Okay, I'll just add the importance of the work programme is that it allows us to formulate a budget to set at the next council meeting for next year and of course we are able to make slight alterations as necessary as things change throughout the year, but the idea is that we're able to set a budget with a, with some tasks behind it. Any questions on next year's work programme? Tim?
It was just, we were talking about wellbeing earlier and it's just to mention that we should keep the staff as well, their wellbeing and there's a lot of stuff here, you know, so keep that in mind, you know, that's our only point, it's probably more as councillor.
Good point. Anyone else? Okay, can I have a proposer for the work programme for next year? Thank you Colin, and a seconda Tricia, all those in favour? And any against? Any abstentions? Brilliant. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, we are nearly there. So we've got two items to go, the next is a proposal to transfer freehold of Rodden Mellow, Waylands, Welshmill and the old Showfield open spaces to the Theodore and La Grasse Trust. This is a trust that the trustees of are also the town council, so there's, there's one sole managing trustee and that is the town council. Thank you. So this is to, so that the town, so that the town council no longer owns those, those assets and they're looked after in perpetuity for the town. Simply means they can't be sold on by a future council. Anybody got any questions for Paul on this? Mel?
The Theodore and La Grasse Trust for open space is, as it says, as you perceive, yeah. One of the areas that I, it is outstanding, is investigation into the possibility of putting the town hall into a trust for the same reasons and I'm, I'm working with a couple of solicitors in town at the moment to bring that forward.
Yeah. Great, okay. Right, I'm, I'm happy to propose this one, anybody want to...